Excellencies, dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, we shall now proceed with the interactive dialogue with the Commission of Inquiry to investigate all alleged human rights violations in Eritrea. Delegations wishing to inscribe on the list of speakers should do so by using the electronic system which will be opened very shortly. But before we open it, it is my pleasure to welcome to the podium the members of the Commission of Inquiry, Mr Mike Smith, Ms Sheila Keith-Ruth and Mr Victor Dankwa. Before I give the floor to the mandate holders, I would like to ask the secretariat now to activate the electronic system for the inscription on the list of speakers. You have one minute, one minute to inscribe on the list of speakers. And after the minute has lapsed, we will show the provisional list on the screen. The list of speakers will finally close then in fifteen minutes. Before I will give the floor to the chairperson of the Commission, I would like to inform you about the following. It has been brought to my attention that the members of the Commission— Before I give the floor to the chairperson, I would like to bring to your attention the following. It has been brought to my attention that the members of the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea have been subjected to various threats and acts of intimidation in their hotel and in the streets since their arrival in Geneva. Security around members of the Commission has had to be redoubled and contacts established with the host country’s police. We have also taken security measures to ensure that the interactive dialogue proceed with calm and dignity. Substantive disagreement with members of the COI or other mandate holders can always be expressed. It is, however, totally unacceptable for them to be subjected to threats and intimidation in the context of discharging their mandates which are established by the United Nations Human Rights Council. As President of the Council, I will follow up at the bureau level on this and all other related cases that are brought to my attention. Having said this, I would now like to invite Mr Mike Smith, Chairperson of the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea, to present the report of the Commission pursuant to Council Resolution 26/24, if possible, within ten minutes. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr President. Mr President, Deputy High Commissioner, distinguished members of the Human Rights Council, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. More than two decades have passed since Eritrea emerged as a newly independent nation full of hope for a free and prosperous future for all its citizens. Unfortunately, that promise remains unfulfilled. Today, the dream of a democratic Eritrea free of human rights violations seems more distant than ever. The Eritrea we see today is marked by repression and fear. Since independence, ultimate power in Eritrea has remained largely in the hands of one man and one party. Those in control often rule arbitrarily and act with impunity. A promising Eritrean constitution adopted in 1997 has never been implemented. The Eritrean people have no say in governance and little control over many aspects of their own lives. A massive domestic surveillance network penetrates all levels of society, turning even family members against each other. Much of the population is subject to forced conscription and labour, sometimes in slave-like conditions. Tens of thousands have been imprisoned, often without charge and for indeterminate periods. Eritreans have never voted in a free and fair election. Hundreds of thousands have lost hope and are risking their lives to escape one of the world’s most oppressive regimes. The number fleeing such a small country, estimated at 5,000 people each month, is forcing the outside world to take notice. Eritrea’s dire human rights situation can no longer be ignored. Over the past several months, our Commission of Inquiry has found that systematic, widespread and gross human rights violations have been and are still being committed with impunity in Eritrea. Our findings are sobering. The many violations in Eritrea are of a scope and scale seldom seen anywhere else in today’s world. Basic freedoms are curtailed from movement to expression, from religion to association. The Commission finds that crimes against humanity may have occurred with regard to torture, extrajudicial executions, forced labour and in the context of national service. The non-implementation of Eritrea’s 1997 constitution has had a profound effect on the country and its people. With no parliament meeting and a court system controlled by the executive branch of the government, it can be said there is no rule of law operating in Eritrea. Violations of the right to fair trial and due process are particularly blatant. Torture is often used to obtain statements. Judgments are rarely made public or even communicated to the accused. Arbitrary arrest is common, often ordered by any person with de facto authority. Scores of people have been victims of enforced disappearances, including journalists, political dissidents, religious leaders and adherents, and members of minority ethnic groups. Given the widespread nature of human rights violations over many years in Eritrea, a culture of impunity is firmly entrenched throughout the country. Bringing this pervasive culture of impunity to an end is obviously a daunting task but essential for any genuine efforts to improve the human rights situation in the country. The Commission recommends that the government start the process by acknowledging the existence of human rights violations and ensuring accountability for them, including but not limited to extrajudicial killings, enforced disappearances, torture, unlawful detention, sexual violence including in the national service and forced labour. This should include establishment of an independent and impartial mechanism to investigate and where appropriate bring perpetrators to justice, particularly those with command responsibility. Victims should read, should receive adequate redress. Ladies and gentlemen, in addition to human rights violations reported by the Special Rapporteur on Eritrea, by SEDAW, by the CRC and most recently by the ILO Committee on the Application of Standards, the Commission has identified new patterns of violations under the repressive system used by the Eritrean government to control, silence and isolate individuals. Eritrean authorities intentionally use torture in the course of detention. The harshest conditions and the strictest regimes of detention are deliberately employed to punish so-called traitors, those believed to be a threat to national security or suspected of cross-border crimes. It is also used to obtain statements of self-incrimination, to extract a confession or information or to force religious believers to renounce their faith. Another pattern involves the routine systematic use of certain methods of torture on conscripts and detainees. Ill-treatment and torture are an established feature of the interrogation process and is routine during military training and in the army. The recurrence, coherence and similarities of the many torture accounts heard by the Commission are a clear indication of the existence of a deliberate policy. Under the pretext of defending the integrity of the state and ensuring national self-sufficiency, the government has subjected much of the population to open-ended national service, either in the army or through the civil service. On turning eighteen or even before, all Eritreans are conscripted. While national service is supposed to last eighteen months, in reality, conscripts end up serving for an indefinite period, often for years in harsh and inhumane conditions. We collected several testimonies of conscripts having been in the national service for periods exceeding more than a decade. The Commission concluded that forced labour in this context is a practice similar to slavery in its effects and as such is prohibited under international human rights law. Imagine the impact of this uncertainty on young Eritreans who lose all control over their own futures. Is it any wonder that Eritreans, most of them young people, are the second largest nationality after Syrians to resort to seaborne smugglers to cross the Mediterranean to Europe? Many cite indefinite conscription as a reason for fleeing. Having lost all hope in their own country, they risk their lives to escape a dire human rights situation and a bleak future. This is a tragedy both for them and for their home country, which can ill afford to continue losing its youth. UNHCR, the UN Refugee Agency, placed the number of Eritreans under its concern outside the country at nearly 417,000 by the end of 2014. The Commission urges the international community to continue to provide protection to Eritreans fleeing human rights violations and warns against sending them back to danger in a country that punishes anyone who tries to leave without permission. Returning Eritreans to their country of origin can put them in danger of arbitrary arrest, detention, ill-treatment and forced labour. The Commission also has documented cases of the relatives of people who have fled the country being arbitrarily arrested in retaliation. In engaging with the Eritrean authorities on solutions to stem the flow of asylum seekers, the international community should place human rights considerations at the forefront of any package of proposed abatement measures, and it should insist on tangible progress on human rights in Eritrea. The Commission would like to emphasise that it repeatedly sought the cooperation of the government of Eritrea in carrying out its work, but received no response to our requests. The government of Eritrea described on 9 June the findings of the Commission as “an attack, not so much on the government but on a civilised people and a society who cherish human values and dignity”. With respect, we, the Commission, are recording the voices of real Eritrean people as articulated in the 550 testimonies and 160 submissions received. We also reflect the silenced voices of the majority of Eritreans who have never been able to elect their own representatives in national, free, fair and democratic elections. The voices of imprisoned and ill-treated critics, journalists, religious leaders and others who have disappeared into a vast network of jails. The muzzled voices of those subjected to forced labour and inhumane conditions for years on end. And the voices of those who every day risk their lives to flee a government that has failed them and all of the others. The testimonies collected by the Commission include Eritreans who fled their country as recently as February 2015. Contrary to government pronouncements, those testimonies indicate little has changed in recent years. Arbitrary arrests, detention including incommunicado, enforced disappearances, extrajudicial killings, widespread ill-treatment and torture continue. It is high time that the government of Eritrea truly endeavours to improve the human rights of its people. We need to see real progress, not just words. The President of Eritrea has announced that a new constitution is being drafted, but no one knows who is in charge of that task and whether it will be submitted for approval by the people or their representatives. Similarly, the government announced that the length of national service will be reduced to eighteen months as of 2014. But it is impossible to verify the implementation because the decision appears to apply only to those conscripted in 2014, not before. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now the responsibility of the Council to keep the human rights situation in Eritrea under close scrutiny. The Commission strongly recommends the extension of the mandate of the Special Rapporteur. The Council may also decide on further investigations to establish whether crimes against humanity have actually occurred in Eritrea. It is time for true commitment and real change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me state that the list of speakers will close in no later than fifteen minutes. And we shall now start by hearing the delegation of the country concerned. I will give the floor to the distinguished representative of Eritrea. You have five minutes for your statement.
Mr President, we have already communicated our response to the report of the COI. But in today’s deliberation, therefore, I will not go to detailed rebuttal but to highlight some of the salient features. I asked the secretariat to consider the longer version of this statement, which has been circulated to this room as part of the official statement, but in the interest of time, I will read a shorter version of it. One, Eritrea remains under UN sanctions since 2009. However, there is growing consensus these days, including in the capitals of the principal sponsors of the resolutions, that the punitive measures metted against Eritrea were based on heresy and trumped up charges. But the fact is, the sanctions have exacted huge economic and development costs to a small and young nation. And despite current regrets and second thoughts, they remain enforced due to the procedural hurdles, diplomatic inertia and continued hostility by some principal players and powers. Two, the evidence strongly suggests that this entire episode was conceived from the outset to serve as a substitute and fallback option to the UN Security Council imposed sanctions in order to continuously harass Eritrea for ulterior political motives. Notwithstanding the impediments and ongoing violations of the principles, however, an expanded paradigm of engagement encompassing cooperation with the OHDHR, consultation to initiate work with the thematic mandate holders and treaty bodies, bilateral engagement with states and missions accredited to Eritrea and abroad and cooperation with the UN country team have been initiated and concrete steps have also been taken. Three, Eritrea has reasons to believe that the Commission has deliberately short-changed its investigative mission to bolster preconceived politically motivated conclusions and recommendations. Indeed, the Commission acknowledged that it has coloured its report from interviews of 550 Eritrean asylum seekers and written submissions of other 160 Eritrean citizens abroad. In the first place, this cannot be an appropriate sample. Eritreans in the diaspora are close to 1 million, to infer sweeping indictment of a sovereign nation and its government. More importantly, the Commission’s highly subjective standards of proof and validation, which it describes as reasonable grounds to believe, is illustrated to ascertain potentially falacious testimonies of asylum seekers or well-known individuals who espouse different, even subversive, political agendas. In fact, the Commission routinely disregarded various reports by UN agencies in Eritrea, testimonies and submissions by reputable foreign business companies that operate in the country, corporate ethical audits carried out by independent and reputable foreign agencies, always as well as testimonies and submissions by Eritrean communities. We know of courageous individuals who approached the Commission to disavow the typical false asylum testimonies they had filed in their new country of domicile at the risk of facing legal charges of perjury. But all these evidences were neither assessed nor cited and acknowledged in its report. The fact that thousands of Eritreans from all over Europe have demonstrated against the report yesterday is in itself a live witness to the Council. The Commission can also dismiss the existential threats that Eritrea has and is still facing. It recommends with amazing imprudence and insensitivity for the international community and the United Nations to assist Eritrean Ethiopia to solve the border issues through diplomatic means. Obviously, the Commission is either ignorant or does not care to note that the border issue has long been settled through an international arbitral process on the basis of a UN guaranteed algeris peace agreement, that the Eritrea-Ethiopia Boundary Commission had deposited in November 2007 the exact coordinates of the boundary at the UN cartographic office, and that the United Nations itself is keenly aware that Ethiopia remains in flagrant violation of international law although it has not taken appropriate steps of enforcement due to US blockade. Five, to draw another parallel with the Somali Eritrea Monitoring Group, a crucial drawback that crippled the SEMG objective work was a compromising political association of some of its members with some countries. As you may know, one of the Somali Eritrea Monitoring Group officials was dismissed recently when it was asserted that he was openly advocating regime change in a confidential letter he had written to a former official of the government. Unfortunately, Eritrea has reasons to believe that some officials of the Commission belong to the same league. The personal political persuasions and affiliations of Commission members are not of interest to Eritrea. But it is another matter if this has to do with the way domestic politics and governance are conducted in Eritrea. In the event, Eritrea wishes to draw attention to this august body that the Commission has members within its ranks that espouse sinister political agendas against Eritrea due to their closing unorthodox association with subversive groups.
Please come to an end.
I’m making the conclusion. In conclusion, the bleak narrative on human rights in Eritrea that the Commission has portrayed is widely at variance with the prevailing reality in the country. Yes, there are shortcomings and I have no intention to claim that everything is rosy in my country. In any case, this has been and has been addressed within the UPR process and engagements. Eritrea is indeed a young nation that is facing numerous problems, a big part of which has to do with externally inducing existential challenges. In spite of all these challenges, Eritrea’s institutions are evolving at a reasonable and healthy pace. Its economy is progressing steadily and ready for take-off after much hard work. To ignore all these realities and falsely indict Eritrea to advance the political agenda of certain powers will thus constitute a huge travesty of justice that cannot be excused under any pretext. In this connection, I want to mention that if what has been mentioned about the intimidation of the members of the Commission is right, it’s a very sad revelation, but the delegation is unaware of any such intimidations—
Please come to an end. I would like to ask the distinguished delegate from Eritrea to use a language in the future that is adequate for this Council and preserves the integrity of our mechanisms. The Commission is not ignorant and they don’t have a sinister political agenda, and this is not a travesty of justice. I must reject these formulations. Now we go into the speakers’ list. The first speaker is the European Union. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr President. Distinguished members of the Commission of Inquiry, first of all, the European Union thank you for your hard work and secondly, regret that the government did not grant you access. Eritrea should extend full cooperation to the Commission and implement its recommendations. The European Union is deeply concerned about your assessment that systematic widespread and gross human rights violations have been committed in Eritrea. Your report describes a government-controlled system aimed at silencing individuals and denying their fundamental freedoms. We are deeply disturbed by your assessment that some violations may amount to crimes against humanity. We note how the situation in Eritrea impacts on the whole region with an increasing number of Eritreans leaving their country and risking lives in the hands of traffickers. The European Union works closely with other countries to address this human trafficking problem, and the problem of irregular migration and its human rights challenges needs to be tackled collectively with the countries of origin, transit and asylum. We recognise that Eritrea is working through the EU/AU cartoon process. As a question for the Commission, what are the most urgent steps that the government and the international community should take to address the root causes of the migration from Eritrea? The government’s announcement to reduce the national service to eighteen months could be an encouraging development in the interest of the Eritrean people. We stress the importance to provide full information on the implementation of this announcement. Secondly, you recommend that the government seek technical assistance. Which recommendations do you see best suited for this? And finally, let me reiterate again the call in the government to cooperate fully with this Council and its mechanisms and to grant access to the Commission of Inquiry and to the Special Rapporteur. Thank you very much, Mr President.
Thank you. The next speaker is the distinguished delegate from Ghana.
I thank you, Mr President. The delegation of Ghana is deeply saddened to learn from you, Mr President, that at the beginning of this meeting, that members of the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea have been subjected to orchestrated acts of harassment and intimidation since their arrival in Geneva, and wish to condemn those behind such attacks. Ghana commends the Commission for their comprehensive report shedding more light on the human rights situation in Eritrea. Ghana regrets that owing to the non-cooperation by the government of Eritrea, the Commission of Inquiry could not have the benefit of visiting Eritrea before writing its report. We note that the report mentions the progress made by Eritrea in addressing the health needs of the population, including reducing maternal mortality. Ghana also notes the acknowledgement by the Commission that Eritrea has submitted its periodic reports to the SEDAW and their Committee on the Rights of the Child. However, Ghana is concerned about the findings and conclusions of the report of the Commission highlighting systematic widespread and gross human rights violations that have been committed by the government of Eritrea in respect of which there is here to be accountability. In the light of the Commission’s findings and conclusions, Ghana wishes to urge the government of Eritrea to consider the recommendations made by the Commission, including the need to implement the Constitution of 1997, ensure the separation of powers between the legislator, the executive and the judiciary, and to release all those arbitrarily detained. It is recalled that a commitment made by African leaders under the Constituent Act of the African Union to respect the rule of law, human rights and good governance was informed by our contemporary history of mass human rights violations, including instances of violent civil wars that occurred in the African continent in the late 80s and early 90s. Ghana is also cognisant of the fact that while the Charter for the former organisation of the African Unity emphasised our sovereign independence, the Constituent Act of the African Union gives equal attention to our growing interdependence and urges member states of the Union not to remain indifferent in the face of egregious violations of human rights and mass atrocities. On the basis of the African Union principle of non-indifference as well as in the spirit of constructive solidarity with the people of Eritrea, Ghana wishes to appeal to the government of Eritrea to give serious consideration to the recommendations in the report of the Commission. Ghana also calls on the government of Eritrea to bring to justice all perpetrators who might have committed various human rights abuses identified by the Commission as possibly constituting crimes against humanity. Ghana further urges the government of Eritrea to collaborate with the Special Rapporteur in implementing her mandate and respond positively to her request for an invitation to visit Eritrea. To this end, it is our hope that the government of Eritrea will welcome the renewal by this Council of the mandate of the Special Rapporteur on the situation of human rights in Eritrea. I thank you, Mr President.
Thank you. The next speaker is the distinguished delegate from the USA.
Thank you, Mr President. The United States thanks the Commission of Inquiry for its work and for the thorough and substantive report on the abhorrent human rights situation in Eritrea. On the basis of heart-wrenching testimony, including hundreds of interviews and written submissions, the Commission found that systematic, widespread and gross violations of human rights have occurred and are occurring with no accountability, and that some of these violations may constitute crimes against humanity. The government has created and sustained a repressive system of control, silence and isolate individuals in the country which deprive them of their ability to exercise fundamental freedoms. The Eritrean leadership rules through fear. Individuals are routinely arrested and arbitrarily detained and at times tortured or disappeared. The Commission’s work to document serious human rights violations in Eritrea must now lead to action. The Commission also described systems of national service and forced labour that it noted effectively abused, exploited and enslaved the Eritrean people. We encourage the government of the State of Eritrea to honour its commitment to return the duration of the national service to eighteen months for persons recruited since 2014 and treat all recruits humanely. This would send a positive signal to the international community and Eritrean people. Significantly more has to be done, however, to address the violations the report describes. The Eritrean government must hold free, fair and transparent democratic elections, develop an independent and transparent judiciary and release persons arbitrarily detained, including members of the G15— y compris les journalistes G15 et les membres des groupes religieux. Le gouvernement du Etat d'Éritrea doit travailler urgentement vers un terme à la fin des violations décrites dans le rapport de la CNI. Les Commissaires, nous sommes choqués par les rapports de harassment contre vous. Ils devraient être investigés complètement. Y a-t-il des actions diplomatiques ou programmatoires spécifiques en plus de celles déjà soulignées dans le rapport que vous proposez aux États membres de considérer dans ce sens? Merci, monsieur le Président.
Merci. Le prochain auditeur est la déléguée distinguée de la République Czeche.
Merci, monsieur le Président. Nous soutenons le statut deliveré par l'Union européenne. Nous remercions les membres de la Commission d'Enquête pour leur travail et pour le rapport qui a amené notre attention aux violations systémiques, de droits de l'homme et de droits de l'homme en Éritrea. Nous regrettons que les demandes répétitives de coopération du gouvernement d'Éritrea n'ont pas reçu réponse et que les membres de la Commission n'ont pas eu l'occasion d'accéder au pays. Nous sommes étonnés par les findings de la Commission que des violations des droits de l'homme ont été et sont commises sous l'autorité du gouvernement et que certains d'entre eux, dans les domaines de l'ex-judiciaire extrajudiciaire, torture, service national et travail obligé, peuvent constituer des crimes contre l'humanité. Comme mentionné par la Commission, ce n'est pas la loi qui règne sur les Éritreains, mais la peur. La non-implémentation de la Constitution de 1997 qui contient des provisions sur le droit individuel et la suspension de l'Assemblée nationale qui a arrêté la convénation en 2002 ont résulté dans une situation où il n'y a pas de droit de loi en Éritrea. Les surveillances de la population, la liberté de mouvement, d'opinion et d'expression, l'arbitré arrestation, les disapparitions obligées et les tueries arbitraires nous alarment. Nous appelons donc le gouvernement d'Éritrea à assurer l'application de la Constitution de 1997, à reconnaître l'existence de violations des droits de l'homme et assurer l'assurance, à permettre la création de partis politiques et à tenir des élections libres et égaux à tous niveaux. Nous serions intéressés pour savoir quelles étaient les principales difficultés et défis pour le travail de la Commission lors de l'investigation et de la documentation des violations des droits de l'homme sur la base d'interviews avec des témoins qui ont dû quitter leur pays et même dans la diaspora qui vivent sous la peur de potentielles surveillances. Je vous remercie.
Merci. Le prochain auditeur est la déléguée distinguée de l'Australie.
Je vous remercie, monsieur le Président. L'Australie remercie la Commission d'Enquête pour son rapport et nous sommes inquiets de entendre des menaces à la sécurité de la Commission. L'Australie est profondément inquiète par les findings du rapport que le gouvernement d'Éritrea est responsable de violations systémiques, de droits de l'homme et de droits de l'homme. L'Australie est désespérée de voir que la Commission, comme le rapport spécial avant elle, n'a pas été capable d'accéder à Éritrea pour accomplir complètement sa mandate. C'est aussi décevant, étant donné que Éritrea a accepté les recommandations sur la coopération avec les procédures spéciales de l'ONU. L'Australie est profondément inquiète par les violations des droits de l'homme soulignées dans le rapport de la Commission, y compris que les Éritreains sont soumis à des systèmes de service national et de travail obligé qui abusent effectivement, exploitent et enslavissent effectivement pendant des périodes indéfinies de temps. Nous sommes inquiets par les findings de la Commission que les violations des droits de l'homme en relation avec l'ex-judiciaire extrajudiciaire, la torture, y compris la torture sexuelle et le travail obligé peuvent représenter des crimes contre l'humanité. Les perpetrators de tels crimes doivent être pris en compte. L'Australie encourage à Éritrea à appliquer complètement la Constitution de 1997 et les droits que l'OMC inscrit, y compris permettre aux partis politiques indépendants et à la société civile fonctionner librement. Nous serions intéressés pour entendre les opinions de la Commission sur les mécanismes pour aborder les questions d'assurance formulées dans son rapport. Merci.
Merci. Le prochain auditeur est la déléguée distinguée de la Chine.
Premier ministre, le中方 n'a jamais soutenu le projet de loi sur le droit de l'homme. Il a mis en place un système de surveillance extérieur. D'après les rapports, le système de surveillance extérieur n'a pas de moyens de renseignement et n'a pas de对象 unique. Il a souvent causé des résultats peu客观 et complet. Il a causé des différences systémiques. Il n'a pas vraiment représenté la situation de l'autre pays. États-Unis est une pays qui n'est pas assez développé. Il y a des problèmes de droit de l'homme qui sont souvent liés à la richesse économique, la capacité de gestion, etc. Le中方 a particulièrement remarqué que la réglementation a causé des effets négatifs à l'évolution et à la聲 et à la causation de conséquences négatives à la situation de l'autre pays. Le中方 a appelé les sociétés internationales à voir le cas de l'Etat-Uni et à aider à protéger et à encourager la situation de l'autre pays. À partir de sa volonté et de ses besoins, à lui fournir des services techniques et des services de construction et à s'agir de manière constructive pour avoir des conversations, résoudre les tensions et les doutes. Il a mis en place un système de développement de la situation de l'autre pays. Merci, Premier ministre.
Vous avez le droit. Le prochain auditeur est la déléguée distinguée de la Belgique.
Merci, monsieur le Président. La Belgique associe la Déclaration de l'Union européenne. Elle s'associe également à la condamnation des actes d'intimidation dont ont été victimes les membres de la Commission. Je remercie le rapport spécial et les membres de la Commission d'Enquête pour leur rapport sur la situation des droits de l'homme en Éritrea. Les violations des droits de l'homme rapportées sont graves et particulièrement regrettables. L'Éritrea a ratifié les principaux instruments des Nations Unies en matière de droits de l'homme. Malheureusement, les rapports présentés ici tendent à démontrer que le gouvernement manque à ses obligations. L'abus de la conscription militaire, par exemple, violent les droits politiques, économiques et sociaux du citoyen et sont à la base d'une grande partie des décisions de départ pour l'immigration clandestine. Nous appuyons les recommandations de la Commission d'Enquête et du rapport spécial et appelons particulièrement le gouvernement d'Asmara à ouvrir le dialogue avec la communauté internationale, y compris les représentants du Conseil des Droits de l'Homme que sont le rapport spécial et la Commission d'Enquête. Nous demandons également au gouvernement de renouer avec l'esprit de la lettre de la Constitution de 1997 en apportant des garanties pour la fin effective du service militaire à durée indéterminée et d'ouvrir le débat politique et sociétal avec les jeunes générations. Un conflit pourrelongé avec un pays voisin ne peut fournir un prétexte à ne pas respecter les engagements en droit international auxquels l'État indépendant d'Éritrea s'est engagé et qui sont par ailleurs largement incorporés en droit interne via la Constitution de 1997. Est-ce que les membres de la Commission d'Enquête peuvent nous fournir des éléments quant aux mesures nécessaires pour mettre fin à la traite des êtres humains et les enlèvements qui sont particulièrement communs sur les routes de la migration clandestine au départ de l'Éritrea? Je vous remercie, monsieur le Président.
Merci. Le prochain auditeur est la déléguée distinguée du Djibouti.
Merci, monsieur le Président. À la fin, Djibouti, qui est le commandant de la Commission sur les droits de l'homme en Éritrea, pour le travail outstanding mené malgré la refusation du gouvernement d'Éritrea d'accéder au pays. Nous applaudissons la continuelle non coopération du gouvernement d'Éritrea dans les mécanismes du Conseil. La Commission a objectivement et transparentement basé ses findings sur un body de données de première main par un grand nombre de victimes qui ont délivré témoignages évidents à des interviews confidentielles et à des soumissions écrites. Nous sommes alarmés par le pattern de widespread et systémique d'un grand tas de violations des droits de l'homme, y compris les tueries extrajudiciaires, les disapparitions obligées, l'arbitré arrestation et détention, la torture et les conditions de prison humaine, les violations de l'自由 d'expression et d'opinion, la liberté d'assemblée, la liberté de religion et de foi, la liberté de mouvement et la conscription militaire obligée. De la particularité à Djibouti est la situation de migrants migrants impotents qui résident sur des routes dangereuses de sortie et qui risquent la captation, la torture et la mort dans les mains de trafiquants ruthiques. Nous, au Djibouti, continuons à ressentir du mal et de l'anxiété à cause de la carence d'informations sur les lieux d'origine et la santé des prisonniers djiboutiens de guerre hérisseurs dans les prisons d'Éritrea. Sur la part des sponsors somaliens et camerouniens, Djibouti a circulé une proposition de resolution draft sur la situation des droits de l'homme en Éritrea qui interroge le gouvernement d'Éritrea à prendre des mesures immédiates et concrètes pour appliquer les recommandations faites par la Commission dans son rapport et propose d'amplifier la mandate de la Commission pour investiguer le degré à quoi les violations des droits de l'homme et les abus identifiés par la Commission dans son rapport constituent des crimes contre l'humanité. Merci, monsieur le Président.
Merci. Laissez-moi dire que la liste des auditeurs est fermée. Laissez-moi aussi dire que c'était le dernier auditeur que nous pouvions accommoder aujourd'hui parce que nous avons certains droits de réponse. Le premier droit de réponse est celui de Turquie. Vous avez le banc.
Je vous remercie, monsieur le Président. Turquie utilise son droit de réponse concernant les accusations infondées faites par le représentant du régime syrien ce matin. Même si ces allegations ne sont même pas valables de réponse, je voudrais mettre le record droit. Quand il s'agit de présenter des rapports médias comme référence à cet augustin body, le record historique du régime syrien concernant les tueries massives, les bombardements à barrel, l'utilisation de chloreine et l'oppression de ses propres gens est assez évident. Comme étant tellement responsable et la cause principale de la destruction inévitable et du souffrance humaine en Syrie, il ajoute insulte à l'injurié que le représentant du régime syrien essaie désespérément de dissimuler les mensonges et de diffuser les accusations dans le but de couvrir les crimes contre l'humanité commis par le régime. Cela constitue aussi une insulte à l'intellect et à la conscience de l'international. Personne, particulièrement le régime en Syrie, n'a le droit de questionner l'effort de Turquie de renoncer au peuple syrien à certains de ses dignités et espérer qu'ils ont perdu suite à l'oppression murderous du régime. Je vous remercie.
Le prochain auditeur est Syrie.
Je suis le président. Je commence par la parole de la Saudi Arabia. Je vais inviter des personnes qui ont une bonne foi en tous les océans et les émirats à offrir des salles de bain de l'armée et à lutter contre les échecs des syriens dans ce mois fâché et à s'acquitter des droits de l'homme dans leurs pays qui ne vont pas perdre les biens de la planète. Je reviens au système sydien qui manque à l'indemnité quand il se passe une image d'homme arabe. Même si le meilleur service qu'on peut lui donner sont les paroles de l'abandon de la fauteuillemente et les messages des gens qui sont enfermés pour la mort et le feu et les retombées d'autres menaces. Nous avons parlé dans des rapports sur des apparitions silencieuses et de la chasse à la joie. Je pense que le monde vit dans une ère de la violence qui est engagée par ce système. Il ne suit pas ce que le monde dit chaque jour. La première ligne sera enregistrée dans les pages de l'histoire. La marche des pousses est une tour du système qui est en cours avec des menaces inacceptables jusqu'à la fin. Il suffit que nous soyons conscients de la culture des droits de l'homme dans ce système et que nous soyons conscients de l'ennemi national qui est le peuple sydien. Je ne vais pas le nommer et qui estime qu'il faut participer à ce domaine car il dit que la force personnelle de la femme est mauvaise. Mais une image de la seconde seconde qui manque à l'argent est la responsabilité et qui vit une image de la maladie et de la diplomatie. Il a opposé l'utilisation de documents de la classe de la police pour des enquêtes et des articles qui ne passent pas par les émissions de leurs émissions électroniques.
Il y a un point d'ordre. Je suis désolé. Une seconde. Maître auditeur, une seconde. Il y a un point d'ordre qui doit être traité immédiatement. Quel est votre point d'ordre?
Je vous remercie, le président. Le président, ce n'est pas la première fois où il passe la parole du système sydien, le générale adhésion, et l'utiliser pour des mots non-làquats. Ce réunion ne correspond pas à ce cabinet. Ils sont interdit de parler de mots comme les mots qui ont été mis sur les lèvres des personnes qui parlent sous le nom du système sydien. C'est une chose inacceptable. Je vous remercie, le président. Je vous espère que vous avez le droit de parler des adhésions générales et des adhésions générales. Je vous remercie.
Je demande à l'auditeur d'abider par le protocole des organismes de l'ONU et de la langue. Vous pouvez continuer.
Je vous prie personnellement, le président, d'entendre les articles que je viens de lire depuis la soirée et aujourd'hui matin. Cette image, l'image de ce système qui a eu lieu il y a longtemps et de la réglementation à un niveau des messages utilisés puis des articles. Suivez-le. Les émissions électroniques qui ont fait l'image de ce système